Okay, folks, it appears to be six o'clock. It is Tuesday, February twenty second, two thousand and twenty-two, a very special day, right? Two, 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 two. It is six o'clock, not two o'clock. And we're in the council chambers for the city of Platteville, and we'll start tonight's common council meeting with roll call. Kathy Cop? Jason Arts?
Here.
Lynn Parrott?
Yeah.
Isaac Shanley?
You're.
Barbara Doss?
Here.
Ken Killian?
Here.
Eileen Nichols is excused. Okay, our first item on our agenda tonight is a presentation of our annual tourism report by the executive director of the Platteville Regional Chamber, Wayne Woodars. Welcome, Wayne.
Thank you. I did present all the council members a packet last week, so hopefully you all had time to look through that. I'm not going to talk a long time about any of it, but just kind of share some highlights. The results for two thousand and twenty-one were still impacted post-pandemic. Will be reflected in the numbers that you looked at. Many of the promotional opportunities that we typically did in the spring were not done last year. They weren't offered by some of our publications, or they were offered in a virtual platform, so that affected some of the monies that we spent. Many challenges early in the year affected our entity financially, including fewer travelers utilizing our lodging establishments due to cancellation of events in response to the virus. And one hotel is still closed from a fire back in two thousand and nineteen for various reasons, so we were down one lodging property. So all these factors led to a reduced amount collected in hotel tax for the fourth quarter of two thousand and twenty and for the first quarter of two thousand and twenty-one. So, but we did receive that travel grant that I showed in the packet there for twenty-nine thousand, thirty-one dollars. We didn't want to spend that on the typical budgeting items that we would do in a normal year, so we targeted what we were going to do, kind of our wish list, and that was all drawn out for you on that, on the back page of the entity report, so. That's really all I have to say. Does anyone have questions about the entity report, how we spent the money? Actually, as it turned out, the numbers came in for third quarter were fantastic. I think we had our best quarter ever by the numbers, and the fourth quarter just came in several weeks ago, and that was our best fourth quarter in many, many years. So it was hard to budget when you look at the tourism action plan for the coming year. We couldn't hardly budget, knowing that everything was going to be the same as it was two years ago. But we did increase from where we were at two years ago, since the hundred and ten thousand dollar budget, we went with a hundred and fifteen. So all in all, the year ended with a slight amount left over, so we've got a little bit of a bubble there. What happened was the revenue from the hotel tax was better than what we anticipated by about thirty-three thousand. We did spend more than what we had anticipated by twenty-three thousand, so there's a ten thousand dollar balance left in our account. So we'll work towards getting that spent. I did also receive an eighty-two thousand, five hundred and seventy-two dollar grant award through the Department of Administration that I've explained how we're going to spend that. There again, it's all a wish list, things that we wouldn't typically be able to do. So next year, I'm hoping to report the same way. We'll do it as the typical budget, and then we'll show the average or the overages that we've spent through this grant. So does anybody have any questions for me?
Wayne, how are you doing with staffing?
We're still a little short there. That was another reason there was an overage. So that's my first priority now that the celebration is over with the chambers to try and get some new staff down there to help us with some of these promotional things. So we are, I did budget to save or to help us with staffing. I did budget money from the grant to be used for a marketing coordinator. Some of that money will be used towards freelance marketing, so it'll save us in-house hours and time. My former assistant is going to be doing some of that work for us, so that'll save us payroll hours, but we'll be paying it through the grant. So I think that'll help us with staffing.
Yeah.
So you received how many grants? Two grants?
I received a grant in two thousand and twenty for the twenty-nine thousand that we had to spend during two thousand and twenty-one. Now, I've just received a grant award in November of eighty-two thousand, five hundred and seventy-two dollars, which we will, we could be spending now, but I'd wait, I wanted to wait till two thousand and twenty-two to spend it. I wanted it to be a clean wash, so we wouldn't be mixing those grant monies together. We also received a PPP loan last year for payroll only, but that didn't reflect anything with the tourism.
Now, as far as funding, the funding is from the room tax.
Correct.
Okay, room tax. And then there's no funding beyond room tax as far as from the state, nothing.
I received tourism information grants twice a year. I can get those, but that typically helps offset the payroll as well. It's for money that you've already spent.
Tourism information.
So.
Yep.
So looking at.
They're not, they're not showing.
The state has not given any money out as far as helping. You have eight regional centers, correct?
Yep.
So they don't do any funding as far as from the state itself, except you're getting some grants. So that's one question. As I recall, there was some beginning money when the regional center was set up. Was that about sixteen thousand, something like that?
Fifteen.
What?
Fifteen thousand.
Okay, I was close. Anyway, next question is the facilities that are located as the Enter Wisconsin, are those facilities still in usage? They took away the.
Keeler Rest Area, yes, is still.
Now, the work at the counter, they just have maintenance people there, is that?
It's not staffed by anyone that can help a tourist come through, no. We have brochures that we put there, but it's not staffed by any.
Okay, so it's the same as years ago, okay?
No, it's not the same.
No, he means it's the same as when they.
Oh.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And then as far as years ago, we talked about Motel is keeping a record of people that are tourists. Do anything done in the way of that? Or is that too hard to separate out?
I think the lodging properties do. As part of their customer service, they tend to ask where people are from, why they're here. We did track that, starting last year when we had the ATV, UTV, when we wanted to expand the trails. We asked the lodging properties how many people were there for those purposes. We still do that at the chamber office. The hotel property owners were supposed to be quarterly sending that information to me, and I have to admit, I haven't received that for the last couple of quarters.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah. Anything else?
Other questions? Jason, Kathy?
I'm just curious, Wayne, did you get the, the last, that big grant yet? The last time we talked, you had received acknowledgement of it, but you hadn't, you don't actually have.
I did receive the check.
Oh, you did?
With an email that stated that now they need an audit, so I'm almost afraid to cash it before, before I turn over the paperwork that they need. So, you know, a lot of those opportunities they offer you before they really know how they're going to facilitate. And so as they get the check in the mail, then they figure that's when they're going to start asking for more information. So I'm sure it's just going to be a slight pickup where I just need to send a financial report or some type of a verification of something, but I still was a little leery to cash it right away when I got it, so it'll go in the bank this week, though. We'll have that. So we also just released, I don't know if the council all received these in the shopping news, but we put out our new two thousand and twenty-two Platteville Guide, so I brought some copies. I stocked your brochure wall out there as well, so. Thank you very much. We take.
A minute. Isaac, you any question? Lynn?
No.
Okay.
We do take this seriously, the opportunity that you present with us to bring people to town, not just to support our businesses, but to promote quality of life. We're hoping that if we can get people to come and see what we have here, they will want to come back, stay, maybe buy a home, raise a family. It's happened to many of us in this room, so we're hoping that that's, you know, that is our ultimate goal. That's what we're shooting to do, so thank you very much.
Okay, well, thank you, Wayne. Okay, we'll move on to the next item on our agenda, which is consideration of the consent calendar. Not any longer consent calendar, but consent agenda, I'll get that right. The first item on that agenda are the council minutes from the February eighth regular meeting, payment of bills, the financial reports for January, appointments to boards and commissions. I'm still looking for people. I'm still getting more turn downs than I'm getting accepts. So if you know of anybody who's interested, please let us know. Or if you're interested in yourself, in it yourself, please let us know. I know Jody has a form out on the Facebook page, and there is one on the city's website. Licenses tonight, we have the Class B combination beer and liquor license for Platteville Lodging, Wisconsin LLC. This is the Cavelstone Inn and Suites owned and operated by the Patel's at seventeen fifty-five East Business Highway one fifty-one. We have a temporary Class B to serve fermented malt beverages issuing to Roundtree Gallery for an event on Saturday, March the twelfth, which is a performance by the Prairie Lights. We have another Class B permit to serve fermented malt beverages to Roundtree Gallery for Friday, March twenty-fifth from four to eight. This would be the Drift Artist Opening Reception. There are several one- and two-year operator licenses in your packet, and then there is a run-walk permit from High Vibe Fitness for a St. Patty's Day walk run on March nineteenth, Saturday, March nineteenth. So what's your pleasure on the consent agenda?
I moved away, approved the consent calendar.
A second. Okay, there's a motion and a second to approve this consent agenda. Candace will vote. Cop?
Yes.
Arts?
Yes.
Parrott?
Yes.
Shanley?
Yes.
Doss?
Yes.
Killian?
Yes.
Motion carries. Okay, next, we have citizens' comments, observations, and petitions, if anyone, and if any. There is no one who has registered to speak, but tonight I would like to welcome Olivia from the Telegraph Herald. Our former Telegraph Herald attendee Bennett moved on, I believe, to Omaha. And Olivia has been at the TH since the spring and is now going to be covering News from God's Country. Right? You got that right. Okay. Kathy?
I just would like to take a second for, to acknowledge the efforts of Candace during the election last week. First time for me voting at the Broski Center. It was extremely smooth. Parking was not an issue, and the setup was very well done, and we were in and out of there very quickly, so good job with that.
Thank you very much. I obviously don't do it by myself, so we have a really good team.
And so do we have any feedback on how it went at the Allsvick?
It went pretty well. We had a handful of people that, understandably, this is a small election, so we're going to really push information for the April election to kind of get the information out there, but we did have, I would say, the eighth of people that showed up, maybe less, that were at the wrong district. And it wasn't always that it was, they were at Allsvick and needed to go to Broski or vice versa. Sometimes it was, they were at the District One table and needed to be at District Two table. So we are still wanting to get that information out there, because obviously it's not just that the polling location has changed for District Four. It's all the district lines in the city of Platteville have been moved. So that does affect a lot of people, not just District Four folks.
And so we had no parking complaints, I'm assuming?
We did not have any parking complaints. It worked out very well. The Platteville Police Department blocked off or had voter parking only between Pine, or excuse me, on Hickory, between Pine and Maine. That worked out really well. A lot of people were able to just get in and out of there and vote when they were able to, whether it's on their lunch break before work, after work. Usually people tend to sort of be in a hurry when they're trying to vote, so we want to make that as easy as possible. We didn't have any issues at the Broski Center. I was kind of popping in back and forth throughout the day and just kind of making sure everybody was all right, and it seemed that most people were very understanding and that things were going pretty smooth, so I appreciate that. Thank you.
Right, thank you. All right, then we'll move on now to reports that were in the packet. The Housing Authority Board minutes from December twenty-one, Ken?
I have no additions.
Historic Preservation Commission from January eighteenth, Ken?
I have no additions to this one.
And Commission on Aging, Kathy, from January nineteen.
Um, nothing at this time.
Okay, the other reports in your packet were the Water and Sewer Financial Report and the Airport Financial Report. Any questions on either of those? If not, then we'll move into the action portion of our agenda. So the first item on our action agenda is Resolution two thousand and twenty-three authorizing the city manager to submit applications to the Wisconsin Department of Transportation for the two thousand and twenty-two, twenty-six, twenty-six Transportation Alternative Program, often referred to as the TAP awards. Adam? Oh, Howard, pardon me.
Okay. City of Platteville is competing for up to three of these TAP grants for the twenty-two to twenty-six award cycle. Realistically, the grants, if awarded, would be constructed in twenty-four through twenty-six. The TAP Grant Program is for alternatives to motorized transportation. The sidewalk plan and map approved back in January showed three potential trails for construction or upgrade. We have them in priority order. First, we're calling the Mountview Park Trail to be upgraded from a gravel path to a paved and lighted trail from its connection to the Roundtree Branch Trail near the bridge behind Jane and Stone up to Mitchell Hollow Road through Mountview Park and then connecting to Fairfield Drive north of the high school. The schedule would be designed in twenty-three using approximately a hundred and thirty thousand of city-only funding and construction in two thousand and twenty-four for one point five million. Since these are eighty-twenty grants, the city portion would be three hundred and twelve thousand roughly. Priority two is the Main Street Connection Trail, which would include an expansion of the trailhead parking next to the dog park and construction of a new trail from the connection at the Roundtree Branch Trail along the berm on the old railroad bed to connect with sidewalks, excuse me, sidewalks on East Main Street near the skate park. That would be designed in twenty-four, construction in twenty-five. Sixty-two thousand and twenty-four for design, seven hundred and forty-seven thousand for construction, which would put the city's portion at just under a hundred and fifty thousand. Priority three is what we're calling the Southeast Rail Corridor Trail. It would connect to the Roundtree Branch along Business one fifty-one near the Napa Novus Businesses, get up onto the old railroad bed and continue to East Side Road where it connects with the existing trail near the intersection with Evergreen Road. This would be a twenty-five design for a hundred and thirty-five thousand and construction in twenty-six for just under one point six million, which would make the city's portion just under three hundred and nineteen thousand. I have it broken out by year, what the city would fund and what the grant would fund and everything else. One of the things that has happened since then is the city has spoken with the DNR, and there are grants available that will allow motorized traffic on them, such as snowmobiles. And if we are successful on both fronts, that DNR grant would completely cover the twenty percent city match. We did have a discussion about LEDs versus solar. That would have to be discussed during the design process itself. But just to give you an example, we have a hundred and thirty-eight LEDs on the Roundtree Branch Trail plus underbridge lights under the three bridges that, that the trail goes through. And the cost for that lighting, for all of that lighting, was just a little over a thousand dollars in two thousand and twenty-one, or about a little over seven dollars and fifty cents per light per year. So putting all three trails together, we're talking a hundred and fifteen lights, which is less than what's on the current Roundtree Branch Trail if we use the same spacing. I understand that some people have a question whether or not that's reasonable or whether we should expand the distance, but if we use the same distance apart, we're talking a hundred and fifteen lights, which comes to under nine hundred dollars per year for that cost.
This is electrical cost.
Electrical cost, yes, that would be.
That does, that's not the cost of the light.
No, no, no.
That's the cost of the electricity for the light.
That would be the annual operational cost for the lights once they're installed, correct? And what I'm saying is, out of those numbers that I said earlier, the cost estimates for the lights themselves vary from twenty-five percent to just under a third of the cost of the, of the entire project. The bigger the project, the, the less the cost for the, for the lights. City staff recommends approval of the resolution.
Okay, questions or comments?
A question, the first one. You mentioned something about there being a possibility of no city cost. Could you go through that? Is that just a probability that you listed?
It's a possibility.
Possibility.
What I'm saying is, first, we have to compete with the DOT for the DOT funding. And we would submit a parallel grant request with the DNR, the first one being due on May first, and we would all, we would be competing for the DNR money as well. If we are successful on both counts, then there would be no city money for the construction portion.
But there would still be design costs.
There would still be design costs, correct?
Lynn, do you have questions?
No. No.
Isaac? Kathy?
Um. Yeah, I'm concerned that, so is it possible for, there's three, three projects? Can we apply for one? Or is this a package deal, that it has to be all three of those trails? And, and if you could explain that the TAP grants is, are they offered like every three years? So this isn't something that could be applied for next year? How does that work?
I believe it's every two years is the cycle. But they, they generally are looking three to four years out in the cycle. They rarely give grants for the near term in the cycle. So, so that's why we were pushing this where, where we were talking in twenty-four, twenty-five, and twenty-six. I, I guess, suppose, I guess legally, you could, you could pass a resolution with only one of them, if, if that's what you wish. You would just have to say so in the motion. We did submit the, the paperwork. We would just have to withdraw the paperwork for the, the one, two, or three that you decide not to support.
And Howard, if the, if all three were awarded, I mean, you've prioritized these, so who knows if one would be awarded, if two would be awarded, or if three would be awarded. It is possible at that time that, of the award, to say we've now can't do number three because of A or B or C, or we need to pull back or whatever. So just because the award is made doesn't mean that the award must be accepted, especially if we encounter other complications along the way.
So to.
That's correct.
Yeah, to kind of reiterate on your concerns, Kathy, if we're awarded all three of these, essentially just like any grant award, we have to, somebody from the city has to physically sign and accept that. So that's where, obviously, if I got all three of these, we'd have to do an analysis to make sure that the twenty percent that we're covering, we can actually fund within the city, you know, it can't be something that's going to be a detriment to the taxpayers, so that's.
So a couple of other questions. So if we apply and we find out that we're not able to do it, does that hurt our chances to do it, apply again?
Technically not. I mean, you know, it goes through the same grant competition process at the DOT on, you know, every other year. So, yeah, we would just.
You can keep resubmitting.
You could keep resubmitting, and you would probably end up having to push it out another year or two because, because of their cycles, but that would be about all.
Okay, so. So it's a possibility to, at this point, I'm, I'm concerned with the, the budget end of it for the most part, because what if we receive all three and that, and I realize you have to prioritize them, but the city's portion of that, if you, if we don't get the DNR piece, it's over a million dollars to be pulled out of the budget somewhere. I'm not sure where that money would come from. And then this, I realized that, you know, we, we have mom new. I have a question of how is it going to be maintained? And I guess that question raises my concern more with, with the Southeast Rail, because it's so long and there's really not, I mean, it's a corridor. There's not a lot of going to this point to that point. At this point, I mean, at some point, if development takes place out there, I could, I could see it. But I'm, it comes back to the funding. If we get this, how is? I'm questioning how, how we keep our priority of a fire station. We only have so much money, and I think we've gone to a pretty significant length saying that we want to support a new fire station. So the money end of it is a concern to me, but it wraps in with the maintenance. We see construction costs, design costs, but okay, for the electric, but then there's still main maintenance, and it wouldn't be part of the community arboretum, right?
There'd be some of that. I think you would have, you know, the community arboretum would obviously contribute, but I think to your point, Kathy, is what would happen is if we now know that we're going to have, you know, almost, you know, four million dollars in trails, that specifically now goes into a long-term, you know, in our capital improvement planning, as we've talked about, you know, last year, we kind of created that document, and now, now we have the, the structure. So now the next step to that piece of the puzzle is to start thinking some of those long-term questions that you're starting to think about is, okay, we have a CIP, we have nothing in there right now that addresses long-term maintenance, and we don't really have that in our budget. So being good financial stewards of the city is we have to start to address those issues and think about that long-term. So if we suddenly get, you know, four million dollars, which is great, that's, you know, that's what we want, that's why we're going after these grants. But then it's the conversation of, okay, we need to then start thinking about having a contingency in our CIP or in our budget that now is specifically for trails, which is every year we're putting X amount of dollars aside for trail maintenance for this. And just as you indicated, we have to kind of weigh that against all of the other projects that we're doing as a city. So we have these three priorities. If we get them, that's great. If we can go after the DNR grants and get it fully covered, boom, we got it. You know, then we can turn our focus to, all right, then we can truly focus on long-term maintenance. If we find out we can't get that, then we have to have a conversation as a city is, out of these priorities, one, two, and three, we may, as much as we would love to, even if we got awarded all three, we may not be able to do it. So we'll have to look at that long-term and go, where does that priority level sit? So.
So we do have, we do have the option to do that.
Yes.
Okay.
Yep.
And, and Adam, would it be more appropriate to say instead that the city portion would be, would it be more appropriate to say that's the local portion?
Correct.
Because there isn't a restriction on where the money would need to come from.
No. Correct. That is correct.
So it, it doesn't necessarily need to come from city funds.
No, it could be a conversation of. No, it could be a conversation of if we get the grant, maybe that's as we've talked about with some of the, you know, committees that we have seen that have formed or citizen groups, potentially you have that, that would fundraise for that, you know, so there's options there. You know, also kind of alluding to that point, perhaps there's other, you know, municipalities that would benefit from it, even the county. You know, that's a conversation we have with the county is we're truly creating a, not only city asset, but it's a county asset. So there's some conversations I think we could have with the county about potentially assistance in, in multiple sources. So.
So I think it's probably more appropriate to call it the local.
Yes.
Amount that needs to be raised versus the state delivered amount or whatever you want to call it. Additional questions Kathy?
Just to clarify though, that for the priority number one, the schedules, the design work would not be until next year. We're not talking about any effect whatsoever in the budget twenty twenty-two.
That's correct.
Okay, all right. And, and the, I have they announced, when do they generally award TAP grants? I mean, these are gonna, they have to be in by a certain time, so.
Yeah.
Award dates are.
I'm thinking we're talking summer.
Yeah.
Yeah. So a lot of times we don't, I mean, these go in and then it's like forever until you're actually here. Ken, do you have another question?
Yes, I have a couple of questions. First of all, going back to the resolution itself, under the second whereas, that number comes up to be three million nine hundred and two thousand two hundred and fifty dollars. And then going back to the total that you give on the page, which says four million two, two hundred and twenty-nine thousand two hundred and fifty. So when I subtract three million nine hundred and two thousand two fifty from four million two twenty-nine two fifty, the difference is three hundred and twenty-seven thousand. What, what is the reason for the difference of three hundred and twenty-seven thousand?
I'd have to double check my math again, but we did not, I wasn't including the design costs in our resolution. The, the resolution was only for the construction costs for, for all three trails.
So that cost wasn't in there. So I'm just looking for the two hundred and twenty-seven thousand. So that's one question.
And that would be the design cost if you had those three up.
Yeah.
Okay, my next comment is that when we look at this, where's the money going to come from? Now Barb has put in the word local and what does local mean? Does that mean CIP? Does that mean donations? Is that what we're talking about?
And I think that Adam also raised the issue of county support. I mean, these are trails for all. So I mean,
Right.
It could be, it's a local match, that might be city match, it might be county match, it might be donations. I mean, I don't think there's any.
No, we're not going to exclude any option that's.
There's no exclusion.
If we start looking at CIP, CIP for roads in the city of Platteville is much needed. So if we start giving money for the construction of trails, we're going to be cutting out and slowing down even more our construction of road to city of Platteville. So I'm not very keen on this idea of constructing trails. I believe in constructing trails, but I don't like the idea of taking the money from CIP. So why aren't we doing something like putting it into a situation where we use private funding? And also this would be private funding from donations and also private funding from naming rights for trails. So do we get money instead of relying upon CIP?
I, I don't think there's been a decision to rely on CIP. I don't think at any.
It's, it's listed in the resolution. The last whereas says the local match is available through future capital improvement program budgets and.
Right. So when, whenever you're dealing with a project specifically that has it, so within our kind of our city processes, anything that has a project cost that typically is over ten thousand dollars, if I remember correctly, that is, that is considered to be a capital improvement project. So that goes into our CIP. But I think to answer your question, Ken, it's when you look at, if you think of that book that we've created, you've got every single project that is considered to be a capital improvement project. But then you get down into the section that is funding sources. And that's kind of the question I think that you're alluding to is, yes, it may be listed that it's a CIP, but from I think my perspective as the city manager, and I think from Howard, we don't want to decrease the money that we have for roads. Because as we all know, as every municipality is dealing with right now, everybody's behind the eight ball on roads. So right now in our CIP, we have earmarked usually about one, between one and two million dollars that we go and borrow for roads. This would be a, as of right now, the recommendation I would not, I'd be telling you not to dip into those funds. It would be a separate conversation of there's usually about seven hundred dollars that we have historically kind of played with in the past that has either been funded directly from tax dollars or it's been a combination of just as you said. So our priorities as a staff would be, if we get this funding, we first want to talk about any other grants that we could go after. So that's the DNR grant that we talked about. Then I think just as you said, we then go to private donations. We look at anybody, any group that would be willing to donate. We look at any citizen that would want to donate, naming rights, whatever they want. They want to paint it a certain color, we'll figure it out. Then we kind of go into, okay, if we can't do that, then we go into the conversation of do we want specifically CIP funds that are separate from the borrowing to be considered? Or as, that'll be another conversation we would have to have is do you want to increase our borrowing above what we normally do for roads to cover this? Our hope would be that we would have enough donations and everything else that that doesn't even become an issue. But if we do, it's the boxes. We go from step to step to step, starting with private donations, private funding. If that doesn't work, then it goes to the next step. And worst case scenario is, we talk about what impact that has if it's coming out of the seven hundred thousand dollars typically give or take that we've used in the past. Or if it's going to be something that we are additionally going to borrow, because either we have the capacity or we're willing to go above our capacity to fund this project.
So CIP.
That brings up another question.
Yep.
That if we borrow, then how long will it take us to pay off this debt? And what's going to be the cost of the borrow? Is the cost of the borrow in any of these numbers so far?
No, because that's going to be, we're not going to know that until we have vetted every single one of those steps. So I mean, the only thing I could tell you is if we're assuming we have to one hundred percent, you know, if you're looking at it, if we're saying the local match comes to, what did we say, about a million dollars?
It's one million, one hundred and seven thousand dollars and four hundred and fifty.
So the worst case scenario right now, if you're asking me today, is we have to fund one point one million dollars.
Yeah, so.
Right.
My question is, that's a borrow, if that's a borrow.
Yep.
Then what's the cost of the borrow? How many years will it take to play off the borrow?
Right. So that's the financial analysis we would have to look at if that truly is going to be the worst case scenario.
So that's going to be an additional cost beyond what we've listed so far. And as far as maintenance, the maintenance, what do you look at? The tours report, the maintenance that I see listed by many people is this, I think, maintenance along the trail. That's not maintenance as far as pavement and lights and so forth. There's the whole big, oh, he's gone. There's a whole page of people listed.
Yeah, from the PCA, that is correct. Yep, that volunteers their time to basically keep the trail.
But that's something separate.
Right.
So that, so my biggest concern is that we really need the roads more than we need the trail.
Right. And so I think, you know, the question with that, I don't think anybody disagrees that we definitely want to continue improving that. This is an oppor, it's a grant opportunity. So the question that's going to come back to you is if this is approved, we have to make some decisions. And that's where if it's all free, it's just like we said, we have to decide how essentially, if we're going to accept all three of those grants, we got to have a conversation about what do we want to do? Is it, are we willing to do all three and knowing what impact that has on the city, which is a perfectly valid question, I think that you're asking Ken, is if we accept all three, we got to find one point one million dollars to cover the match. So it's how do we do that? It's, we go through the steps is it would be, we're going to try to get grants. We're going to try to get public, private funding. If we can't do that, then it's a legitimate question of is it worth it? And can we do it? But we're not going to know that until we get awarded the grant. So those are kind of the things, once we know we have an award, then as staff, we can run the financial analysis, we can bring in our financial advisors and look at, okay, what's our capacity? What's the, you know, and give you the pros and the cons and everything you can think of. And then, you know, hopefully, as we talked about, the best case scenario is we're not going to have to worry about that because we're going to get some type of private donation or additional grant funding. So the only question we need to focus on then is long-term maintenance, which is a much cost-reducing conversation than if we have to fund one point one million dollars of everything else.
Okay, I have another question on the, the resolution. It's underneath one, two, three. The fourth whereas. And it says, and any non-participating costs for this project, what are the non-participating costs?
Don't know at this time. What it means is whatever is not a part, part of the scope of, of what is allowable under these TAP monies. And I, I, I can't.
So Howard, would it be fair to say that if you work on this, a portion of your time would be a non-participating cost?
That's a possibility.
So staff time donated to this or copies made for this may all be quote unquote, non-participating costs.
Right. I was also thinking that there may be some costs that end up showing up during the design or whatever process that are not within the scope or pigeonhole for these TAP grants. And if we still have to do them, those may be considered as non-participating. And I can't think of any off the top of my head at this point, but.
Okay, then I have another question on the resolution. It's under the third whereas. And it says reimburses project sponsors for the federal share up to eighty percent of the approved TAP project cost. Now, when they say up to eighty percent, it gives me the feeling that they might, may not give us a full eighty percent. So that my wording would be up to the federal share of eighty percent of the approved project. So why, it seems like this is not a, a correct statement here is, it doesn't look right to me. And then it says at the end, up to the limit of the federal award amount and goes on. So the wording up to eighty percent means it might be seventy percent. Is that true?
That is correct. So that is a option that, and again, this is a standard form that we have to do. This resolution is not one that we created. It's basically a template that when you do grant submissions, there are certain resolutions you have to pass because it's their wording and you hit it on the head, Ken. It's that is essentially, would they do that? I think potentially it's an option. I mean, it depends. If they suddenly have so many grant applications and they, you know, decide they want to try to fund minimal, they could do that. I think what's going to happen there is all of those grant applications are probably going to be a very different conversation because that's going to come back to most of the municipalities and they're going to go, no, you know, we're not, we're not going to do that. But they obviously have, they put that in there for legal reasons to give them financial flexibility where if for whatever reason, the numbers aren't shaking, where they have so many applicants and they can't do eighty, they could come back and say it's fifty. But then I think they're going to know what's going to happen is then it's a question. It's, do you want to do that? And that's probably going to cause a lot of people to go, no, we're not going to do that.
Okay, those are my questions. As I said, my big concern is streets.
And we're going to talk about streets in the information portion of the agenda tonight and special monies that are available for streets. So.
That's, that's a issue too. Thank you.
All right, folks.
I had one last quick question. So was PCA involved at all in the conversations of this in terms of like, you know, because I'm, I'm assuming that they have the ability to like reach out to donors or, or stuff like that for funding?
We haven't had a direct conversation with them. However, this has gone in front of the community safe routes committee and they were very deeply involved in this. And one of the members on the safe routes committee is the liaison with the PCA. It's part of the charter of that committee. So, you know.
Did Parks, Recreation and Forestry also look at this or not? Yep.
They, they've been informed of this as well, yes.
Are we, can I ask one more, make another comment? Overall, our recreation system in the community has been growing by leaps and bounds with the Brasky Center, the pickleball, the soon to be constructed new playground. And if we by some miracle get the money to do these trails, I would like to see some sort of program or something developed for maintenance. Where, I mean, it's sort of like, even the Brasky Center is so new yet, it's sort of like, okay, so what is, what are the costs? And I know there's a committee that's going to be looking at that. Then I, we walk Mom's Park multiple times a week. That pathway needs to be redone. So where, I'm just concerned that anything that we take on from here on out, we look as well down the road for maintenance and all of a sudden they'll go, oh my gosh, we, we're going to have these big bills and what are we going to do with them?
Correct. So Bob got his first homework assignment when he started February first. He's nodding his head. That was the first conversation I had with him, was that one of the things that I would really like him to do as the park director. Now that we've kind of, we have that new position that, you know, a little bit of realignment of duties, is give him the ability to do exactly what you indicated Kathy, is have a true look at all of our parks. And again, the CIP was kind of created as the, that was step one, was to get that kind of a more comprehensive CIP. The steps that are going to come up down the next couple of years are exactly as you've indicated, is to really get down kind of nitty gritty of, okay, let's prioritize a list of every single trail system we have and kind of do as we do with roads. Let's rank them from best to worst and start thinking about long-term of, okay, how much does it cost to do, replace a trail or to repave a trail? We need to start putting that into contingency accounts and planning so that we are being, you know, when we're getting these grants and we're getting donations and we're getting groups that are coming with donations and saying, hey, we'll, we'll get you to the one hundred percent. That's great. But then we then as the city need to make sure that we're continually then going, we want that. But now we got to make sure that we maintain it so that in thirty years, we don't have twenty projects that have become the previous issue we've had, where we've let things go too long in that cycle of, well, it's still okay. Well, no, we should be replacing that. We need to get away from that.
Yeah, that, that has been, I, I mean, all I have to do is sit in this room and know that that's been a problem. I mean, if you looked at this room two years ago, you could have said, what the heck has been going on to say nothing about, you know, I was in here the other day and Shannon had the kitchen torn apart and it's pretty safe to say that, looking at that, there hadn't been anything done in there since nineteen twenty-nine when it was.
One was still good, but right, yeah.
Yeah. So I mean, Eileen has been calling for years for a city facility inventory and I don't even know what to call it. You can't really call it a maintenance plan because it's really more than
Right.
Maintenance, but you know, and I was involved in that when I was in, on the school board because. maintenance, but you know, and I was involved in that when I was in, on the school board because we never had one of those and it surely made budgeting and planning a whole lot easier when we had the full picture. So that all of a sudden, we weren't trying to do roofs and parking lots and, oh my gracious, we need a boiler. And did you remember this? No, I mean, we need to be way past. Oh, you know, and, and we've already talked about the absence of of handicap accessible washrooms or even a handicap accessible program, not only there, but other places. So you're right Kathy, but yeah. Okay, we have this before us, resolution twenty-two oh three.
I move to approve resolution twenty-two dash zero three, authorizing the city managers to submit applications to the Wisconsin Department of Transportation for the twenty twenty-two to twenty twenty-six transportation alternatives program award cycle.
We have a motion in a second to approve resolution twenty-two oh three. Candace will vote. Cop?
Yes.
Arts?
Yes.
Parrot?
Yes.
Shanley?
Yes.
Dos?
Yes.
Killian?
Yes.
Motion carries. Okay, let's move on to the next agenda item, which is the fire station professional design services R F P.
Yes, so this is in front of you tonight, obviously to look to get a green light to actually disseminate this. So one of the things we've obviously been working on over the last two years is the conversation of a new and updated fire station. If you remember in twenty twenty, we brought in a firm to kind of do a comprehensive fire department analysis and look at, you know, everything from the organizational structure to also looking at potentially what a new and updated fire station might look like. So what we're in right now is we have submitted to try to get some federal funding for that. We had a seven million dollar request that is currently in the budget and we are hoping that eventually that will get passed. The latest right now is that's March eleventh is kind of where we're waiting on to see where that goes. But what we want to make sure is that we're not losing any ground in regards to continually having this conversation. So we were taking a little bit of a, of a kind of not slowdown, but just kind of waiting to see because it's a different conversation when you're talking to not only the public, but to everybody when you can say, hey, we have this seven million dollars versus, well, we don't know. But unfortunately with some of the delays that we've seen with that, we need to go to the next step. So the next step is essentially to do a request for proposals for, for architectural firms and engineering firms to look at a fire station. So based on the feedback that I received from kind of council members and also from staff looking at it, we did make a couple of tweaks. So essentially what this R F P is looking at is for a firm to come in and look at a standalone fire station and pretty much everything that wouldn't be needed there. But then also make recommendations for two things. One, to look at a kind of training facility combination that could be done with a partnership with Southwest, yeah, Southwest Technical College. And then the other component is obviously because it is at O E Gray's, the site, we do have some different organizations that are currently there. So kind of looking at the potential if there could be the possibility of combining some of those abilities to have some multi-use spaces. We'll see. That's obviously what we're going to be bringing in here. So what we're hoping to do is obviously get the council's approval tonight to move forward with disseminating this. We would get this out in a, a kind of a bid, we'd get the information out there. We would have the submittals be due to us on March twenty-fifth. And then we would be doing some interviews. I currently have been working obviously with Chief Simmons and also our fire inspector in regards to kind of working on a fundraising committee. So we've been starting the process of thinking about having members from not only the police and fire commission, common council members, members of the public as well as some specific fire department personnel to kind of be part of that. So we thought that also might be a group that could reach out to, to review some of these applications as we've done in the past. And then potentially it would go in front of the council here on April twelfth for kind of the first review. And then we'd be looking for a decision on April twenty-six. So as far as kind of funding goes, again, that's going to kind of be a question we're not going to be able to really understand until we get the proposals back. Because they're going to have to bid out. We have three phases that we essentially want this proposal to kind of do kind of planning, design, and then potentially going out for bids. So we've asked the firms to kind of bid on all three of those. So we can kind of piecemeal and look at potentially what would make the most sense. So what we're looking for tonight is essentially a motion to allow city staff to disseminate the R F P. And then we will obviously do the process behind the scenes and bring that back to you guys and let you know kind of what happens.
Okay, I have had one person register in favor of going forward with the fire station R F P. And that is Deb Rice, whose father served admirably on the department. And I have had one person asked to speak in favor of the fire station R F P distribution. And that would be Bill Kloster. So Mr. Kloster.
Kloster nine seventy-five Highbury Circle, Platteville. I think all of you on the council have heard me before on this topic. For the last two years, I've been advocating the need for a fire station. I think it's part of the city responsibility to protect the safety of all the residents in here. This is an object or a project that will impact every citizen in Platteville and many of the surrounding communities as the Platteville Fire Department serves, I think, a hundred and seventy-five thousand square miles. Or a hundred and seventy-five. Whatever, there's a big area that Platteville is responsible for, for providing fire safety. And the city has talked about this for twenty-five years. It's time to act. We need to move. And as the city manager said, we're looking at the possibility of getting seven million dollars from the federal government. Let's be ready to take that money and spend it before they decide to take it back. So I would strongly encourage you to approve this resolution and start the process for planning for a fire station. Thank you.
Okay, questions of Adam or Ryan is here on the R F P. Isaac, any questions?
No questions, but a comment is, and I would agree with Mr. Klosters. You know, the city is, as you say, you know, twenty-five years of doing this and every five or six years, you know, the city spends another fifty thousand or twenty-five thousand on other study. You could get the results of that same study every time. We need a new fire department. As you say, that, you know, the numbers are quite high with the federal government or state is thinking about giving the city do this. And as I mentioned in other areas where, you know, we get eighty, twenty or amount of money is there and available, as he said, you've got to be ready to go with it. I think Adam and the chief have done a great job the last six months or so and preparing the city for putting us at the top of the list, getting that money by the plans that they put in place. So I think this is one more step to, you know, hopefully within a few years, having the city have a new fire department that will, as he said, I believe it's probably a hundred and seventy-five mile, not hundred and seventy-five thousand mile radius. Streets that we have here. So I think it's another step on the ladder that we just need to continue climbing up there. So.
Lynn?
Yeah, I totally agree with him. The one, the first thing that happened when I joined was I was given a tour and I couldn't believe what we, what they had to deal with at the fire department level. So if the money is of, we can write the vision, make it plain on how the money is going to be executed and it's, it's time. I haven't even been here that long. And what I saw, I was just like, I just thank God we haven't had that catastrophe or that big something that would push beyond the limits of what the fire department can do. So I totally agree with, with Isaac. I totally.
I have a question. Is there going to be, looking at this first page title? Is there going to be any rooms as far as sleeping rooms for the members? You have listed here, design. Let's see, number one. Training additional space for education and service-based organization. Is there going to be a room for sleeping? So that some people can stay at the fire stations.
Yeah, really, really good question. So that's one of the things where as kind of we talked about, and that was one of the things the fire department comprehensive analysis did is it kind of created a, when we did that the first time, they had a blueprint of what potentially a twenty-eight to thirty, thirty-two thousand square foot facility would look like. And thinking, you know, if we build this, we want it to be something that can be sustained for fifty plus years. So because currently our fire station is volunteer, at this point in time, we don't have anybody, I don't think, sleeping at the station. Maybe, you know, depending on weather, it could be, could be depending on weather, what's going on. But long-term planning, Ken, we may not actually have it built to have that. But the design will be that potentially a room that is utilized for something. So let's say we build it to scale and at this point in time, we don't have people sleeping there. But we want to have a design that that room could be retrofitted to be sleeping quarters. So those rooms may be right now office spaces or they could be rentable spaces for the city. But then when we need to kind of, just as Isaac has alluded to, flip that switch and have people stay there, it's going to be there. So that'll be something we're going to be asking from the architect is maybe right away, we will have that so that we have rooms available. Or design it in a way so that in twenty years, five years or whatever, if we do have to go down that path of having full-time, you know, office firefighters there, that there is sleeping quarters. So, yes.
I think that's clear in your, in, in the rhetoric that goes in the, in the R F P. So Jason, any questions, comments?
Nothing right now.
Kathy?
No comments. I just want to, I did, I did pick up on what Bill said. The, this, this is a tremendous obligation for the city. And it does affect every single citizen.
And are. Yeah, and more, no. So. And I have no questions on it. I would just say that we will continue to press forward. Adam and I will be scheduling a meeting with some people from USDA soon to request additional funding in another, from another source. So we continue to push forward on trying to find money. No one's coming and saying, maybe you can find it here, but we're picking up rocks.
Right.
Looking under bushes. So any help in that regard? So do we have, are we ready to have a motion on this?
Or I'd make a motion. I move to authorize city staff to disseminate the R F P for professional design services for a fire station.
Okay, we have a motion by Isaac and a second by Lynn to move forward with distributing the fire station professional design services R F P. Candace will vote. Cop?
Yes.
Arts?
Yes.
Parrot?
Yes.
Shanley?
Yes.
Dos?
Yes.
Killian?
Yes.
Motion carries. Okay, next on our agenda is the community development board proposal. Joe?
I'll take this one.
Oh, Adam?
Yep.
Well, all right.
Yep. So this, yeah, it is Joe a little bit, but I'll, I'll give him a breather. So this was something that we had our city manager intern, our new city manager intern Carol Swain kind of work on when he got here right away. One of the things that was kind of asked by council leadership was to do kind of a review of our community development board. So as we talked about at our last meeting, he reviewed, you know, multiple municipalities and kind of looked at how their structure was in regards to a community development board. And really what we get, when you get down to the nuts and bolts, due to some of the kind of changes that were made in the state legislature in regards to reporting and in regards to the way things are set up. This board really, the function of the board no longer meets the needs. When everything really has to go through the common council anyway, when it has to be approved or authorized. So this board has not met at least since two thousand nineteen. So in kind of reviewing that and also having our community development director, Joe Carroll, kind of look at this. The recommendation that we have is that we can, you know, eliminate this board. And going forward, anything that would be needed from a community development standpoint would be brought forward from the common council for future consideration.
Questions? Kathy, Jason? Ken? Lynn? Isaac? Okay, are we ready to move forward then?
I move to eliminate the community development board and shift all duties and responsibility previously held to be brought forward to be brought forward to the common council for future consideration.
Okay, Candace, we have a motion in a second from Jason and Kathy will vote. Cop?
Yes.
Arts?
Yes.
Parrot?
Yes.
Shanley?
Yes.
Dos?
Yes.
Killian?
Yes.
Motion carries. Okay, next on the agenda is the senior center van. Howard, John, Adam?
Whoever, that's going to be a tag team. We'll let you go.
I'll start. That's fine. Senior center is looking to purchase, and I need this cross out that word replacement. Purchase a vehicle and ensure it is handicapped accessible to provide services to those members of our community. Senior center has been doing fundraising. And this purchase would be funded via donations and proceeds from the former senior center building sale. The intent would be to use the full amount of donations first and any remaining amount from the sale of the former senior center building. Okay, however, the the ordering window has closed, local dealers cannot get a new vehicle. We did move forward with a request for proposal. It was placed on the city's website and hand-delivered to representatives from our three local dealers. There was one bid submitted by Hookstra Transportation out of Grand Rapids, Michigan. And the bid was fifty-three thousand one oh five. I had specific contact with one of our local dealers saying that he cannot get any more vehicles this year and would not be able to submit a bid. At this point, the council has basically three options. You can accept the bid, reject the bid, or do nothing. If you accept the bid, you accept the bid from Hookstra Transportation for that bid price fifty-three one oh five. Their bid meets all the specifications listed in the R F P. And their sales representative said that the vehicle would be delivered in mid-August of this year. Basically, they've got a a stock van and they'd have to use the time between now and August to do the modifications to make it the handicapped accessible. You know, looking at the pros and cons, you know, we've got a bid in hand. They're required to hold the price for thirty days through March third. And we could have the van in hand for use yet this year. Some of the cons, you know, due to supply chain issues, the local dealers have not had the ability to bid because of the priorities and whether they've got vehicles on hand. The other part is that a new vehicle will cost approximately two thousand dollars annually for insurance. And we estimate another fifteen hundred for fuel repairs and servicing. If awarded and delivered in twenty twenty-two, the city or pass would end up having to cover the additional costs for this year and then budget costs in future years. If you reject the bid, we would need to coordinate with our local vendors to determine a more appropriate bidding window, probably in late summer or early fall. We would do a new R F P and then every dealer, local, non-local, would have the opportunity to bid. You know, the biggest pro in all of that is that our local dealers would be more able to submit a bid. The, the con is that where there's no guarantee that the three dealers will have the same window for vehicle ordering. You know, one may have a three-week bin window in June and another might have a four-week window in August. We, we don't, we don't know that. So we don't know whether we can create a bidding that would be open to all the local bidders. The other is cost of vehicles is likely to increase. Everything else has been increasing. And so you know, you know, we could have a significant increase in that fifty-three thousand price. The other is that if we wait, the vehicle would probably be available in late twenty twenty-three and potentially delayed till twenty twenty-four. Last one is do nothing. If you take no action at all, it effectively rejects the bid because the bidder can only hold the price for those thirty days, at which time, you know, all bets are off. They'll sell it to somebody else or raise the price or, or whatever. In our packet, we, we have two draft letters to the donors. John drafted those letters. Basically, one is if you accept the bid, it tells the donors what's happening and when. what's happening and when they, we can expect to have the delivery of the vehicle. The other letter is if you reject the bid and basically, you know, explaining to the donors that we intend to keep their donations. We would like to keep their donations and that the city will rebid later. You know, in order to make this happen, we would need to do a budget amendment. I have some numbers. I, I was told that there's some.
Yeah, I can, I can go into that a little bit further.
Changes to that?
Yeah, to explain that. So, one of the things obviously we've been working on throughout this is kind of understanding, you know, what we have for donations, what we have for sales and everything else. So, there is forty-four thousand seven hundred dollars that essentially has been received in donations from individuals. So that's either people that have pledged or that's specifically, you know, sales that were done that the city has in our accounts. There are two specific donations that is actually with PASS. So that was one grant that they actually went after for twenty-five hundred dollars. And then also three thousand five hundred dollars that they got from another grant. So there's about six thousand dollars that PASS has. So if this were to be approved, one of the things we would obviously be doing as city staff is be asking that PASS, basically give that check, give that six thousand dollars to the city so that then we can do everything there. So, what that means is there's about, if you combine all of that together, there's fifty thousand seven hundred dollars that has been accumulated so far from donations and grants that we have, that have been received by those parties. So what that would mean is then the senior center building sale proceeds would actually be reduced and would only be, would come off of that fifty-three one oh five. So there'd be about two thousand four hundred and five dollars that essentially would be coming from that. Then obviously with the insurance, the, the fuel and et cetera, as we talked about, that's about three thousand five hundred dollars annually. The senior center has received a pledge from pretty much the primary donor that has indicated that until, you know, at least into perpetuity, or as long as that donor is, is available to give those funds, they will be providing kind of a additional amount to go towards offsetting some of those costs for, for time being. But that would be something as we talked about that we would have to put into the budget and have some conversations between the city and obviously PASS about who would be funding that because, you know, potentially that money is going to run out from that donor. So that's something that we'll have to consider. So again, you know, one of the things that we've kind of talked about with the budget is, and as we've looked into this, I think we would all love an opportunity for a lot of our local vendors to have that ability to bid on this project. The downfall is, as we've talked about, is cost, is we don't know, we have a, basically a bid in hand. So if we reject that, which is every right, as the council that you guys can choose and as a city, we have to consider what that could mean. Is that potentially could mean that the cost could go up? It could stay the same. That definitely is possible. But then some of the concerns we obviously have are with the donors, is the more we are just kind of sitting on that money and not utilizing it towards something, we don't know what could happen. You know, we've, we've had conversations with a lot of the donors who definitely still feel, you know, are obligated to understand why they gave that donation. But those numbers could change. Is if we wait, that's, you know, kind of a gamble we, we would be taking is you don't know. I think, as we said, we would try to get as much information out to all the people that donated to let them know that we're not just sitting on this donation. We're trying to be fiscally responsible and, and also ensure that we're trying to also be, have a level playing field where our local vendors would have an opportunity to bid if that's possible. Again, as we talked about, the downfall there is we don't know. Is that, you know, we have a van, as how we're kind of indicated, there's one in hand. If not, potentially there's one, but you know, the worst case scenario is we may, there may not be one in 2023. So then we'd be looking at 2024. So again, those are just all things that kind of play into this decision and kind of consideration that we need to make. Anything else that I'm missing?
Isaac, questions, comments?
I always try to shop local. I'm not enthused about buying something from out of town, but on the other hand, when there's nothing else available in town, you know, all the dealers have done, whatever else has done, probably a nationwide search on them, which they are capable of doing. I do like the fact that this major donor has also pledged seventy-five hundred dollars for operational costs for two years. I think it makes a huge difference on, definitely. Talking about the park circulation, making sure that there's stuff for kids and for people to do. Like the, again, it's one of those deals where, you know, as Adam stated, costs are going to continuously going up and it's something that's available. You know, a little, little cost of the city, I think is something that we should go for and well-needed, I would say as well.
Lynn?
I have no questions. I'm excited to see this move on though. I would be excited. Hold our integrity to the, the people who have donated and I just would love to see this move forward.
I have no questions. I want to move forward.
Jason?
I'm just want to let people know that in terms of the conversation we had at Parks and Rec, it was highlighted that I believe, you know, some of the donors even like had expected or thought that a van was already ordered. And so I think, you know, in that respect, if we can get this done sooner rather than later, you know, being able to, to again, honor those donations.
I have a different opinion. Because I attended the Commission on Aging last week, and we did have a discussion. I personally am not in favor of awarding a bid to a vendor that we don't know, that is not only not local, not in the state, but outside of the state. And John, if you were in, I mean, consensus was that those commission members would be fine with rejecting the bid and trying it again later. In spite of the fact that there was, they could have it in August, but.
Okay, Kathy, are they also then in favor of if the, right now, the city's obligation would be twenty-four hundred dollars. Are they then in favor of if the van comes in at eight thousand dollars more, raising another eight thousand dollars for the van?
That really wasn't discussed, but I do have a question here. At, at some point, did the senior center not have a city vehicle?
No, so I mean, there is a vehicle that currently is, it's a Dodge Caravan, I believe, that is, that, that is currently at the senior center. The, the issue with that is it's not handicap accessible. So it's, it's basically as if you were a, you know, I mean, we have a Dodge Caravan. It's a family, you know, it, it's basically for transportation purposes to an extent. But it mainly, my understanding, John, and you can correct me wrong, is pretty much used to help assist with some of the meals and some of the pickups and drop-offs and things like that. I'll let you kind of take that and run with it.
Yeah, that's correct. We have a minivan. It is, well, pre-COVID, it was used to shuttle people back and forth to the center more often. Once COVID struck, you know, people were a little hesitant to, to pack them. Ban. That being said, we do use it or I guess kind of let the meal program use it to deliver meals. It's, you know, I don't know if you've ever been in the third row seats of a minivan, but they're good for dogs and kids and certainly not the demographic served. So, it's not, we can't transport a lot of people at a time with that vehicle. We do have a vehicle, but it is not adequate.
I guess I, I had the question. I mean, the, the Commission on Aging said they would reject this bid. So if they would reject this bid and it's that right now, the city obligation is twenty-four hundred and five dollars, are they willing, if it's eight thousand dollars more, to fundraise for another eight thousand dollars? And furthermore, how are your donors feeling? I mean, some of these donations now have been in hand for two years, and I've read an email that was pretty explicit in saying the van was ordered in June.
Sure. You know, my understanding is that there, I have not heard any complaints other than one particular one about the donations. I guess I would argue that the email is up to interpretation. It's unfortunate, but if there's some recourse there, they're welcome to have their money back.
What type of van would this, this bid, this is from Hoax Transportation, would that be a van, would this be, would this be a van that would be able to be serviced by one of our local dealerships or whatever?
So that was a question that came up, and I believe Bob investigated that, and we found that a local dealer could service the van itself. And if there was any problem with the lift mechanism, it would likely need to go. I believe Madison was probably the closest place to take it, but that would be the case regardless.
And so what kind of a van is it, Bob? Is it a Chevy?
It's a Ford.
It's a Ford.
It's a Ford.
Yeah, I know there's a picture, but I can't tell if.
Yeah.
Yeah.
They did make it.
I don't know how I would know that.
They did make it clear it would have to be serviced, you know, by a local.
Yeah.
As far as the Commission on Aging question, you know, I, I brought that up at the meeting to get their input. Their, their informal recommendation was that they were against the idea of going with a, an outside entity. That being said, I don't know that they had all the considerations in front of them that you do here tonight, so.
And of course, we've had experience with vehicles before at the senior center and I'm, and I believe, Howard, can you, were you involved in the purchase of that vehicle? Several years ago? I can't, I can't remember how many years ago, but I do remember that we had significant issues. And I think finally just got rid of the vehicle.
I, I remember the incident, but I don't recall what my involvement was in that. I, I, I don't want to say one way or the other because I don't remember.
And I, I don't think it was, I, I suspect that any local dealer would have to acquire this van from some, just like Isaac said, it's pretty, it's pretty interesting now, the way vehicle purchases go. And how, when you purchase a vehicle, you may go to your local dealer, but they may actually trade it or go to a different dealer and get it. I mean, that's happened to me the last two times as I went to a dealer and, and while, while I thought I was getting it from the, from the local dealer, it didn't come from the local dealer at all. Came from someplace else. So I don't know that the fact that this is not from local, because it would be serviced locally. Adam? We talked about these ordering windows, and I think you and I had a brief conversation about not the senior van, but our lease program with Enterprise, and Enterprise even having trouble being able to order and get into the order windows that come out. They'll have, didn't you tell me that one day they got like a twenty-four hour order window? You have twenty-four hours to order now, and that's your order window.
Exactly. It, it's a, you know, and this was conversations, obviously, that we had with Enterprise, but also I had with some of the local vendors as well. And I think that, I think we all agree, that's kind of the unfortunate thing is I don't think there's any question as a city, we want to support our local businesses. The down, you know, the downfall that we're seeing with that is as, you know, talking with them and just as kind of everybody is, the windows can be two weeks, and it's not a guarantee that even if you, as we've learned by submitting with our lease program, we had a window and we put it in, we still have not heard on two of our vehicles, I believe. We're still waiting on because it's just, everything is so backordered that, you know, people that were, in this, I even had conversations with the local vendors on is people that were supposed to be getting a 2022 vehicle are now getting a 2023. And so it just keeps kind of perpetuating this, this issue. So it, it's definitely something, you know, I understand all sides. It's, it's a, it's kind of a game we're playing is you've got, you know, you have a vehicle that potentially you can have. The downfall with that is you're not getting it locally. And there was some concern, and I think fairly from some of the vendors, as they said, is while your window doesn't really work, because when my opportunity as the owner to bid on that, my answer is pretty easy. It's no. There's, you know, our window's closed. So that's the struggle that, you know, no matter what we do, are we going to have to deal with that? Probably, you know, if we reject it.
So there's, there's no guarantee that the Chevy, the Ford and whatever, Kuna's.
Right. There's no, you know, there, I mean, we can.
That they would all be able.
Yeah, I mean, we certainly, you know, I've talked to the, when I talk to those vendors, you know, I asked, you know, what potentially would be a, a window that we could look at? And as we talked about, it'd be either summer or potentially fall, but it's going to be the same thing. It, it's, but you know, we would try to work with all three of them to do a bid that would possibly make sense. But it's ever-changing and there's no guarantee. So that's the, that's the unfortunate thing of the climate that we're in. It's kind of, it's just something that we haven't really seen, but we're dealing with and trying to learn the, the best ways to navigate. So we continue to be, you know, competitive, but obviously as a city, we would like to have more than one bid. I don't think there's any question on that. It's just hard to get that window where you can get those multiple bids right now.
But this is, isn't this bid less than we anticipated anyway, by like seven thousand dollars?
Right.
Yeah.
Well, a little. They had a, there was a, there was a quote from earlier in the fall that was close to this amount.
My recollection was that the original request was thirty thousand because they had thirty thousand. So my original, my, my recollection was that it was sixty thousand dollars the first time it came to us. I don't, I don't.
Yeah, I think.
I didn't look back.
No, but I think going back to what you're thinking of is that was, if you looked at the primary donation that we have received from the major donor, it was about thirty-five thousand dollars. So to kind of get to your point, we were looking at potentially that donor versus a combination of others. And since then, after kind of applying for grants and getting more donations, that number has shifted a little bit.
And, and this van that they've got the bid on, does this meet all the requirements that the senior center was looking for?
Yep. Yes, it does.
Okay, folks, any other questions?
No questions?
Are we ready to move then on something?
I move to accept the bid from Huckstra Transportation, the amount of fifty-three thousand one hundred and five dollars with expected delivery in mid-August 2022, and with funding to come first from donations and the remainder from the proceeds of the sale of the former senior center and to accept the pledge of up to seventy-five hundred dollars towards the operational costs of the vehicle for up to two years.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to accept this bid and to move forward with this purchase using donations first, which we understand to be fifty thousand seven hundred dollars, and then to use to use proceeds from the sale of the building for the remainder of the, of the purchase. And then to accept the pledge of seventy-five hundred dollars from a donor for up to two years to fund the ongoing expenses, insurance, fuel, and those kinds of things. So Candace will vote. Cop?
No.
Arts?
Yes.
Parrot?
Yes.
Shanley?
Yes.
Dos?
Yes.
Killian?
Yes.
Motion carries. Okay, I think that that is the last action agenda item. So now we'll move into information and discussion, and we'll come first to city motto.
Yes. So this is something that will continue to be on the agenda for a couple of meetings, not past this one as well. But as you recall, last meeting, we kind of introduced this. So going into kind of the third quarter of 2021, we had a kind of marketing campaign that we're continuing to work on, and that was to review the city motto. So if you remember, as you've seen, our current motto is pioneering the good life. That's been on a lot of our information for a long time. Nothing wrong with that one, and that could potentially still be the one that we decide to keep. But we wanted to kind of look at potential options of as we've done a new logo and we're doing more marketing, looking at giving the opportunity to discuss possibly a new motto that could be used. So working with communication specialist Richards, we ran a campaign where we asked kind of the community to give us some ideas. And those were included in your last packet that you saw. And one of the opportunities we wanted to do was obviously open it up to kind of employees and see if they had any submissions. So we did get a couple. Those now have been included. So what you have now is a kind of list. So the thought process here is what's going to happen is I am going to work on creating kind of a survey that you guys will be able to kind of pick your top three. And then that information, I will try to get that out here before and then have you guys submit. And then that information, I will try to get that out here before and then have you guys submit that back to me by the second. And then at the March 8th meeting, we can kind of talk about that. One of the other things that we're working on right now too, with some of our economic development partners, that's our Platteville Main Street, the incubator, Paydick, as well as the Chamber of Commerce and Southwest Tech and UW-Platteville, is we're working on a marketing plan right now where we actually have a consultant coming in. And one of the things that that consultant is doing is actually a survey that is going to kind of go, the opportunity to go citywide. And one of the questions in there is actually kind of a motto, a question. So it'll kind of be another opportunity to get some more feedback from anybody that potentially didn't get to submit during kind of the window that we had. So the plan is over the next kind of couple of meetings, we have a potentially, I think, March 10th and 11th, we're actually having that consultant come into the city and work with all of our partners and obviously council members will be invited to that as well. But kind of working on that. So our plan is to kind of keep moving this along and eventually get to a stage where we can have a campaign where either the top three or top five kind of go back out to the community and there's a vote that's done. And then that information would come to you as the council and they'd be able to officially either keep a news, keep the same motto, adopt a new one. You'll actually have the final say with that, obviously being the elected official. So our plan with that is to kind of over the, the, kind of the month of March is to really kind of do the brainstorming, have you guys vote on it? Bring that information back, let you know kind of what went to the top. And then talk about after we have our chance to kind of work with the consultant, see if they have any insight into potentially mottos that they think would make sense. And then really have kind of the month, if this all aligns, look at doing some type of a campaign in April where we get the information out to kind of the residents, have them vote on it. And then potentially that winning slogan comes back to the council here in May. And we officially kind of have you guys adopt that or announce it. So that's kind of the plan. So what you have here is a list. There really isn't anything you need to do tonight. Just kind of start looking at those. And then when I send you out a survey, you're going to need to kind of pick the top three that you like. And then I'll kind of compile that and we'll put it all together and bring it back to you here and report it back in March.
Anybody with questions? And if anybody has any to add, they can still add.
You can still fire them my way. So if you're in, you know, you're in the shower or you're making dinner or you're doing whatever and you come up with a great idea, we'll take them.
All right. Moving on to the next agenda item, the bipartisan infrastructure law grant program. Howard?
Yes, thank you. Back in November of 2021, the federal government passed the bipartisan infrastructure law. It's called different things at different levels, but this is what they're calling it at Wisconsin DOT. This authorized spending for infrastructure, but it hasn't been funded yet. Under the authorization bill, Wisconsin can expect over a billion dollars over that five year cycle. The first year would be federal fiscal year 2022, which ends this coming September 30th. If funded, the state expects to be awarded about 173 million out of that in this first year. And it would have to be obligated by September 30th. We attended a webinar from DOT on how to do this. There are two programs where roads can be eligible for 80/20 grant funding. The first is their Surface Transportation Program Urban or STPU for the communities under 50,000. This is the regular program that they use, but eligibility is limited to those that are designated as collector or above on the functional classification map. And those are the colored ones on this one, on this first map here. Our major roads here in the city, just a little under a third of our roads. They came up with a new one specifically for this funding called Surface Transportation Program Local. And it only applies to communities under 50,000. And this would authorize funding for the remainder, two thirds of our roads. Realizing that there was no funding mechanism for those roads. Because of the time constraints that we normal, that we're running under, normally DOT thinks of a fast track project as one that's three years in the future. So having something come down the pike that has to be obligated by September 30th is just hair on fire for them. So what they're saying is they are only asking for simple mill and overlay type paving projects only. No curb, no gutter, no water, no sewer, no nothing. For 2022, mill and overlay is what we did these past couple of years on Main Street between Chestnut and Stone Bridge, where you grind up a couple of inches and then you relay those couple inches of asphalt. We need to submit grants by April 1st. They will select the awards for the award in April and early May. We would need to prepare plans and specifications by August. And unfortunately, because it's DOT, there's a specific task list that has to be done and it's quite extensive even for work as simple as this. Design work cannot be funded with the grant money because of the timelines involved. It must be 100% funded for the design work. The DOT would obligate the money and do a state bid opening in November and do the construction work in 2023. 2023 is when we would have to have our 20% for construction purposes. There is a follow-on process for the years 2023 to 2026, also it funded at 80/20. Those are open for full reconstructions and also to support design work also at 80/20. But I, I want to talk about those later. I, I just want to put, plant that seed for right now. What we're proposing at this time are two mill and overlays type projects. The idea would be to do pavement replacement of streets that are approximately 20 to 30 years old with relatively new utilities. Maybe minor replacements that we can do offline, either fall of this year or early spring. The first set would be the industry park. I have a map in the packet, basically all the blue lines in the map there. You know, means drive, insight drive, vision drive between, well, vision drive east of, of East Side Road and Enterprise Drive by the driver's exam down to Stonemilne. And that, on the UCH now. So that's what we're looking at right there. It's about a mile and a half of roads. And preliminary cost estimate, $800,000. The second set would be in the Golden Heights area, starting in the late 1980s to 2003. The only ones that would not be done would be Calhoun and Monage Drive that were done in 2015, I believe. I'd have to look at that again. We, if we were to do some of the work in Golden Heights, there are some of those side jobs that we would want to look at doing. A short section of water main replacement on pyrite, a portion of storm sewer replacements on pyrite and, and storm sewer improvements at the bottom of Pioneer Road. Alternatively, we could stop work short of the bottom of Pioneer Road. So what we have is, we have these items. If we were to do those, for example, in, in very early spring of 2023, prior to the mill and overlay, that extra money would be just under 400,000, 300 by city and just under 100,000 of utility funded items. Combined with the 20% requirement, that would earmark $725,000 of city funding. And right now in our CIP, we've got 1.28 million designated for the Jefferson Street reconstruction. During that 2023 budget discussion, the council would need to decide whether to reduce the scope of the Jefferson Street project or borrow additional funding to do all projects. In order to pay for additional 2022 costs, we could pass a budget amendment to increase borrowing and add the roughly 165,000 to the current borrowing. Or we could look at a combination of project delays or reductions such as our thin overlays and possibly reducing some of the 2022 projects in order to get that money. But we're talking, you know, we're talking one and a half miles of, of streets in the industry park. We're talking a little over two miles, 2.2 miles of streets in Golden Heights. Now, it's, it's a lot of, it's a lot of roads that could be potentially be done with this money.
And Howard, you looked at, you know, of course I always believe you should just ask for more. You, you looked at other places in the city also, and they don't fit the criteria for this melon overlay without replacing water and sewer underneath. Is that correct?
That's correct. Those, those would be the ones that I would look at for the second
Second.
round, the 23 through 26.
Okay.
That could be the local.
And they can be either local roads or the, the higher classification roads.
Right. But this first go around, since the deadline is September 22nd, and they've already said only mill and overlay, it kind of.
Kind of limits.
Limits.
What we're doing.
Okay, Isaac, questions? Lynn, questions? Ken?
Well, in looking at the list for industry park, in general, I'd say that these roads are limited value to the general public. So that putting money into them, I don't consider to be a good investment. So it's not helping the general public. I realize they're trying to get this thing to, they're quick and easy to do, but I don't see the benefit. And then looking at, looking at, what's the other one? Golden Heights. We have a long list there and Golden Heights is again relatively recent. And I'm wondering what a collector road is. What's the definition of a collector road?
Those are the ones that are designated on this other map here that's in your packet.
I see the map. I'm trying to figure out the colors.
Okay, the.
I got, I got some colors here on this one page.
That's not, that's Golden Heights. I'll come back.
You need to be a.
That's Golden Heights.
Yeah.
Right there.
Yeah. But you asked about what's a functional road? You have to go back to.
It, it's one that looks like this. With reds, greens and yellows on it.
Yeah, I think we just approved that map in the last probably four months, five months.
Correct. Yes.
But I, when I look at, at, at Golden Heights, what do you call a collector street as far as Golden Heights?
There isn't one in Golden Heights.
There isn't one.
Those would fall under the second program, which is for the local roads that, that aren't part of that. The, the collectors and above are the ones that are on that one colored map, which is about a third of our road system. Collectors.
But you, but you have, in other words, no, no collectors in Golden Heights.
Correct. The closest collector is Southwest Road.
When I looked at Golden Heights, I thought, well, the only collector there is Pioneer Road West and Pioneer Road East. Because the rest of them, for, for example, Pyrite, Pyrite is a dead end street. So I don't consider that a collector because if, if we were to start naming streets that are collectors and South Court could be a collector because that's the dead end street, just like Pyrite.
All of the streets that I have, all of the streets that I have proposed in both the industry park and in Golden Heights are all designated as local roads. They're not, none of them are collector and above in this list that I've proposed to you. They would be under that second criteria for.
Is that the Surface Transportation Program Local?
Correct.
Well, but then it said here at the bottom, it's, it's a little confusing. Last sentence, it is due to the recognition that communities under 50,000 had no funding mechanism for those local roads. So it gives me the idea that they're not going to work with those. So you're saying we are.
I apologize for, I apologize for any confusion. Under normal circumstances, there is no money available for those STP local roads, the, the two thirds. If we're, if we're talking the normal stuff, this is, this is over and above the normal. This is in addition to the normal. And so the DOT has recognized that they've basically cut out two thirds of roads for most communities and they decided to create this program specifically to target money for those local roads. And so that's what I'm proposing.
Well, my next question is, how are we going to get any money for all the rest of the roads that are older than the dates that you've given for these things here?
The plan is.
Example, Gridley, Gridley by me was built in about 1970. You're talking about roads 1980s, 1988 to 2001, Diddoo Street Park.
Yes.
So those are better roads. So you're just picking out where it looks, you're just picking out the simple ones to do.
Well, unfortunately, simple is all you can do.
When do we get this one? To do the rest of the roads.
The rest of the roads come with the second round for calendar years 2023 to 2026.
And we have no idea how much money might come.
There's, they're figuring somewhere in the 200 to 250 million dollar range each year for 2023 to 2026. I have to have a separate grant submission for those that will go in in June.
But that's for the whole state.
Correct. There's nothing allocated directly to Platteville. We have to compete against the rest of the state.
And, and so when we look at our roads in Platteville, how many million dollars will it take to fix up all these broken down roads?
I'd have to look at it again. I did have a, I did have an estimate in, in one of my works, I thought, that I could, I could find out for you what I'm, what I'm.
I, I bet we're going to go over like this first one you give here, 173 million. I bet we could go use all that state money to fix up our roads.
Oh yeah, we, yeah.
So this is kind of a drop in the bucket.
I understand that. My estimate here is that city costs in 2022 dollars is somewhere in the neighborhood of 160 to 180 million dollars for, for city streets.
For our streets to fix them up. For our streets, to fix them up.
Yes, and a similar amount for the water and sewer utilities underneath them.
Well, we talked about this some before. Uh, we're not getting enough money from the state to, uh, for shared revenue. We're just, we're going backwards. Shared river was, revenue is flat. So that's why we put in for, uh, wheel tax, roughly a hundred thousand a, a year. And that was because the state dropped us off a hundred thousand dollars a year. So we're just, you know, and I don't see the hope doesn't look very good in, under the present big truck of money that the state says they have as far as getting much more in ways share, shared revenue.
Money that
Maybe Adam can give me the answer.
I don't think the money that's been added from the federal level is even available for shared revenue. That's not, that was not one of the uses that was approved.
About the money in the state. I'm not talking
Yeah, so I think to, to answer one of your first questions, if you're wondering about how it would cost the roads, about two hundred and seventy million dollars is roughly what we have in our CIP for every single road to replace that needs to be replaced in our cycle. Um, that's just an estimate, looking at what we have in here. But that, I would say the, the question, that actually came up in a lot of the meetings that I, that I can, especially with, um, you know, Grand County Economic Development and talking with both Senator Markline and obviously Travis Tranel is, you're hitting it on the head, is, is some of the, some of the things we talked about is obviously the state now has a surplus, you know, for the first time in a long time, they have a three point, almost a three billion dollar surplus. Um, I think in talking with Senator Martin, he and I were on the same page, that one of the things we would really like to see that surplus used for is roads. Is, you know, there's a lot that could be done for municipalities if that would be done. And part of that, I think the struggle that, you know, Howard and I have talked about is when you're competing against a lot of municipalities, i- it's hard because we've seen that. Where does the money go? It goes to big cities. You know, that's reality, is it goes to, you know, the larger municipalities or the larger, kind of, you know, the Fox Valley areas, those specific ones. Um, so it, you know, i- it's hard where we want to, as Barb says, you know, when, when the money is there, we want to try to go after it. Uh, but we also know who we're competing against. And I think that's exactly the, I think the frustration that you're learning to can is whenever, you know, we're showing we have, in, in a perfect scenario of money was no question, we would be replacing about two hundred plus million dollars worth of roads. The reality is there's no way, if we're going to be the ones that are responsible to do that, we know what that answer is. There's no way. I mean, you can laugh, you can cry, you can do whatever you want. That's the reality is, there is, you know, those roads need to be repaired. But there is no financial model that Nicola will ever shake her head yes, if I come to her, that we need to do two hundred million dollars. You know, that's, that's the reality. So the, the fight or the question, it does, it, it's, it's, as we've talked about and as the articles that I've sent you is the model that we're working under, which is the primary revenue source we receive, is from property taxes. It doesn't work. I mean, that's what we know, is it, it's a model that is continuing to bleed and it's, it's a problem, is that, you know, with putting, funding a city through our number one source is property taxes is a burden on everybody who is a property tax owner in this room, is you have to make some tough decisions and it's things either get delayed or they don't get done, or you don't do it, even though you know you need to. Um, you're always fighting, as we've talked about. There's a, every conversation we've had tonight has been a laundry list of things where it's, well, yeah, we know we need to do that, but over here we've got X, Y, and Z. Um, so I mean, the biggest thing we can do is we have to continue to push and any meetings that I'm in, I talk with those representatives. And all Barb does, and I know all of you do as council members, when you have opportunities to meet with anybody who's a stakeholder, anybody who has revenue sources, that we gotta do something, because the current model and the current system i- is showing its flaws. And eventually, if we don't find an alternative source, uh, those flaws are only going to get worse.
We need money for schools.
Right.
And bridges. And on and on. And, and so these small amounts that come along.
But it's a band, it's a Band-Aid if that, I would think Howard, we say it's a Band-Aid. It's a, it's what it is, but. Right.
Well, if we would get this grant award, I would have to say that it would help in our overall program. And it might not be the end all, do all, but I mean, let's face it.
Oh, yeah.
We, we don't know how we're going to get it. So if we get this as a grant, then that's just, that much less, we have to figure out how to raise locally.
Exactly. It allows us the opportunity to move projects. Essentially, what, what, what we're looking at is if we can fund projects that we had slated for twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four, it now moves some of those up and gives us an opportunity to look at, hey, it's money. You know, as much as we, we would prefer more, we'll, at this point, we'll take whatever we can get, because that's in the best interest of the city.
And I truly applaud the, a DOT, or yeah, I guess it was DOT, I don't know if it's DOT or DOA, I don't know which one uh, came up with this. Is it DOT?
Yeah, yes.
Because initially, the Surface Transportation Program was going to be limited to only those roads that were collectors.
Yeah.
And which would have basically cut us out entirely. So the fact that they created a surface transportation program for the local roads for communities under fifty thousand is really something to be thankful for. I've been on some of those leak calls where they talked about that. And most communities in Wisconsin, frankly, are under fifty thousand. So the only happy people on the initial calls were the four or five in cities over fifty thousand. And so Howard, this is for just the first year, the Millen overlay, and then you'll bring a subsequent list of roads and proposals for the twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-six program.
Correct.
Those be older roads?
Those would be roads that would have water and sewer and other things.
But
That probably older roads. Yeah.
I'm, I'm looking at, I'm looking at different, different types of roads. Um, to give you one example of one of the roads that I'm looking at for the later program, I'm looking at East Main Street between Water and Broadway. Um, you know, it's not as old as Gridley as yours, as you pointed out.
It's a newer road.
However, we have that very large storm sewer that runs underneath that road that is in fair to poor condition. If you walked underneath there, you would find it goes underneath the building. It has a brick arch for part of the, part of that, uh, uh, storm sewer. Um, and that's going to be very expensive. So if we can get eighty percent money from the state to at least replace and realign that, that storm sewer out from under the building and, and make a new, new storm sewer, as well as improve the road and and water and sewer and all that, I think that's a pretty good start. Now, there's plenty of other roads that we can look at. I mean, there's all the roads in the Knollwood subdivision, the older Knoll, Knollwood subdivision. They have some issues with water and sewer. We've had multiple breaks on a lot of those. There are other roads all over the place. Gridley and, and Roundtree and some of those other ones over by you, those are also good ones that we can, that we can certainly look at. Um, you know, but those, I need to prioritize for after April first to, to be able to walk through which ones we want to do and how much we think we can afford to to do our twenty percent.
And then we got the proposal, the suggestion about redoing Water Street. Remember that? How much was that? Five million or nine million?
Nine or ten million.
But that's all storm sewer, right? That's not road.
Well, yeah.
No, you have to replace the pipe, the whole thing.
Yeah.
Recommended the prefabricated concrete to be used there, take out the old rotten pipe.
True. Unfortunately, there is a caveat on that, because that one is a state highway that does not fit under either of these programs. That's a whole separate program.
And so who's going to pay for that?
That one has to be done through a separate state program. Just like the one that they're doing this last year and this coming year on eighty-one between here and Lancaster. It would be one of those kinds of projects, uh, and, and nobody at DOT can tell me when that's to be funded. But they say that it can't be done through this program.
You're talking about from Platteville to Lancaster.
Yeah.
There, since you brought it up, I have a question.
Sorry. Sorry.
Did they, when they did that road, did they take out the old concrete?
As far as I know, I didn't look at that, but I've
When I initially read about it, they said, well, we're going to take out the old concrete. Because the usual pattern on that road was that in a few years, you're going to start going up and down because of the slabs. So, um, I couldn't find out from anybody whether they broke up the old concrete or they took it out. So I thought maybe you might know about that.
I, I don't, I don't know right off the top of my head.
Okay.
Okay, bipartisan.
Continual problem when they build roads around here. When they go over concrete, I just like Business one fifty-one. They put a simple overlay over Business one fifty-one. And so what are you seeing now? Starting to go up and down, and that simple overlay will not last very long. That's all I want to say for now.
Okay, bipartisan infrastructure law grant program, then we'll come back on our agenda at the first meeting in March for, uh, approval of submission of these two road projects that are, um, local roads for Millen overlay on, only with a couple of special projects relative to some storm sewer work uh, at Pioneer Road and Southwest Road and on Pyrite. Is that correct?
Correct.
Okay, so we will see that back and then, uh, starting in March, uh, we'll be starting to see the, uh, next, uh, set of roads for the twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-six grant pro, program from, uh, these mon, these federally appropriated monies.
Correct.
Okay, so no action required there. Uh, see, we have the intergovernmental planning agreement with the town of Platteville. And I do believe, Joe, that this one is yours.
Yes, that would be correct. Um, so back in two thousand and six, the city and township, um, got together and did a planning agreement where we would uh, jointly review development projects, planning, uh, zoning, land divisions, et cetera, index territorial, uh, zoning area and exterior oil plat review or land division area around the city. Um, so that agreement has expired. So we've been having conversations with the township about, uh, moving forward. Uh, we could just allow that agreement to expire, uh, and not renew it. We could adopt it essentially as is, or we could re-adopt it with changes. Um, so we've had conversations on our level with our plant commission, the town plant commission, town board. Um, had some discussions on that, um, kind of right from the beginning, everybody was, uh, the consensus, uh, everybody's in agreement that, uh, we would, should keep some type of an agreement. The only issue was whether we make any changes to it or not. Um, so there were some discussions regarding some potential changes. Uh, we had a kind of a task force that was formed, three members of the city plant commission, three members of the town plant commission. And we kind of went through some of those potential changes, but, uh, when it was all said and done, um, uh, consensus was to essentially just re-adopt it as it was before. Uh, so the only changes that are in the document, um, that's in front of you are, I would say, very minor. There are, uh, changes to staff titles and it was referenced to zoning coordinator, which was Carol Rinnaker, her position and her role in it. That position doesn't exist anymore, so we had to make that correction. And then I had, uh, Chris, uh, do some updated maps for the agreement of the, uh, ET zoning area and ET plat review area. But as I said, essentially, it's, uh, re-adopting the agreement as it was before. And as proposed, uh, the consensus again was to have it for an additional fifteen years, uh, like the at last agreement. Um, so that would be our, our recommendation is to re-adopt, um, uh, the agreement that's in front of you. Any questions?
Questions? Uh, Isaac, anything?
Questions?
Uh, Lynn?
No questions.
Ken?
See, little hard to hear you, but anyway, um, have you gone over all this with the township?
Uh, yes, that would be correct.
Jason?
Yeah.
Kathy? Joe, could you, uh, it, under your budget slash fiscal impact, you say there could be a minor negative impact if a town road is annexed soon after a street improvement project is completed. Can you kind of elaborate what you mean by that?
So there, there is a provision in there that was put in at, at their request is that they were concerned and this was
And this is on page.
Uh,
Cause I couldn't, I couldn't find it in blue, so.
So that's, and I remember that came about, because, uh, we had this agreement, um, right about the time we had just gone through several annexations of fairly large township properties. This was several years ago. And so they were concerned, well, what happens if we, if from their end, if they just redid, resurfaced the town road and we annexed it, they felt like, well, we just fixed up a road for the city. That wouldn't be fair to them. So we basically put in this, this chart that, uh, based on the, uh, road that's annexed, how long it had been in the past of when it was improved, how much they spent on it. And there was a, a formula that was developed so that we may have to pay them back a portion of the cost of what they put into that road. In the fifteen years that we've had this, we've never had to do that, but it, it
So this is not a new chart?
No, that would be
Okay. And that's on page three of the, of the planning agreement.
Right.
Okay.
The, the, the positive fiscal impact for us is that this agreement allows us to collect the park impact fees for uh, subdivisions, uh, new development in the, uh, plat review area. So that does go to benefit, you know, our parks, because we, we recognize and the township recognize that there are township residents that use our parks. So it, it seemed like a fair way to do that.
Does it, does the township have any parks?
I'm aware of.
Any other questions? Okay, folks, then I think we're, uh, unless I missed my cue here, I think we're at the bottom. I think we only need one more motion. Okay, we have a motion by Kathy and a second by Jason to adjourn. Candace will vote.
Cop.
Yes.
Arts.
Yes.
Parrot.
Yes.
Shanley.
Yes.
Doss.
Yes.
Killian.
Yes.
Motion carries.
And thank you, everyone, for coming out on this, uh, rather icy night.